I changed it to Fogle song.
Okay, Byron Robertson.
Here.
And DPW is Keller tonight, right?
Keller's here representing. Yes, so, all right, so the minutes from the prior meetings, we're gonna have to do multiple meetings here.
I'll make the motion, we accept the minutes from the past meetings, all in one vote.
All in one, okay.
And just sign the ones.
And Councilmember McClanahan says.
So Scott motions. And Tom second. Councilmember Mayfield. Councilmember Bonham.
For what, yeah.
Yeah. And Councilmember White.
Yes.
And Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember McClanahan.
Aye.
All ayes.
All right, so additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, let's add in our new business, item E, Springer Health Insurance.
Can we move it up like A more?
Yeah, we can move it up, I added a Z, but we'll make it above first. There's no other people here for the other four items, just the discussions, but we'll.
It's for health insurance.
Yeah, let's say Susan go first. Adder is the, we'll go backwards. All right, uh, no other deletions or additions, any councilmembers have anything else to add, attorney, clerk, nothing, all right. Old business, we have nothing there, moving on to new business, already Susan, you're up.
Oh, all right. Okay, I've provided a summary of the renewal packages, I gave you three of the big renewals, now I just gave you a little bit of a summary on the top. Basically, the yellow striped packet is the actual renewal of the plan that you have right now. You have a legacy plan, which means it's underwritten, and the pricing on that is based on not only age of community, but also is based upon your claims. According to Anthem, I tried to get rate relief for you guys, because they were increasing the price on that for this next year by 26.8%. I did try to get the rate relief, and they said that your claims are running too hot right now, and we are not able to get rate relief on that plan. So, I did the figuring on that, right now you're paying approximately $15,857.92 a month for your premiums. For 2026, it would be $20,113.6 for the premiums. There are two other plans that we could look at going to. They're both ACA plans rather than legacy plans, so they would not be based upon your claims. All they would be based upon would be the age of your group and zip code of the group. The first plan is the one that Anthem had proposed as being the closest to what you have right now. It would represent a 14% increase over what you're paying at the moment. The premium on that would be $18,095.58. The plan would be different than what you have right now. Currently, you have a $3,000 deductible. This plan would go to a $3,400 deductible for an individual. Right now, you have a $4,000 out-of-pocket max. The proposed plan would go to a $4,500 out-of-pocket max. You would still have the 0% co-insurance. So basically, after you hit that deductible, all you're going to be paying until you hit the out-of-pocket max would be the co-payments for your prescriptions. The RX copays are considerably different than what your current plan is. The generic drugs are the same at $10 copay. The ones we start getting in the upper tiers, the second tier level currently is $30. With the ACA plan, it would be $60. The third tier currently is 60, and the third tier on the ACA plan would be 125. And then the fourth tier currently, it's 25% of the cost of the prescription, up to $200. And with the ACA plan, that copay would be $400, so it's pretty significantly different. There's also one other plan that was somewhat similar. It would represent a 10% increase for the group, so it would be $17,497.15 based on your current census. That plan has a lower deductible than what you currently have. So it would be a $2,250 deductible versus the $3,000 that you have right now. The out-of-pocket max would be higher, though, it would be also 4,400 versus the 4,000 that you have now. But this time, you would have a 20% co-insurance, so that means after you've met the $2,250 deductible, you'd be paying 20% co-insurance on whatever procedures you had done until you hit that $4,400 out-of-pocket maximum. Your RX copays would also kick in once you hit that deductible. And those again are just like the ones that I read earlier, they'd be significantly higher on the upper tiers, it'd be $10, $60, $125, and $400. Unfortunately, all of the plans this year with all the companies have looked pretty ugly. I did look at United Healthcare, and that is this packet that you guys have, it's the smaller one. And for anything slightly even similar, they're running at least $5,000 a month higher than what you're currently paying, all the way up to $7,000 a month higher than what you're paying right now. So unfortunately, everything just does not look very pretty right now. So that's kind of the best that we could find for you right now. Like I said, your claims are running pretty hot, so I wasn't really able to do anything with underwritten plans to look at anything like Allied or anything of that sort, or even the underwritten United Healthcare plans. So not a whole lot of good news this year unfortunately. And that's kind of across the board.
Yeah, understandable, uh, any questions on this?
That the two, the second, third plan is ACAs, will that be affected by the
No.
shutdown and all that bullshit?
No, it's okay. The difference between a legacy plan and ACA plan, when you're looking at group health plans, ACA plans, you have the 100% coverage of preventive services. And also, you have no cap to what they're going to pay out for you. And like I said, they're not underwritten, they're not based upon what your claims are, it's just based on your ages and your community.
You understood.
I did, I did. You're thinking about subsidies and that sort of thing with the marketplace, so, yeah. Yeah, no, that's fine, I understood completely. I'm dealing with that right now, too, so.
Just to clarify that, that Anthem legacy plan is what we currently have. That's the best of everything.
Yeah, they're all.
I was just making sure.
The least out-of-pocket.
Yeah, that's the best, for the employee, that's the best.
But it's gonna go from $16,000 to $20,000. And with an increase, yeah.
And all three of these plans are HSA plans, the Health Savings Account plans, where you guys are contributing to that every year for the employees. So, I didn't write that on there, but they are all three, yes, they are all three HSA plans.
I'm just, HSA with premium rewards on all four of them right there.
Yes.
And when is the, when is the renewal date?
January 1st.
It is January 1st, so can they take this in tonight, there's no decision that has to be made?
Maybe make it in December meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I wanted to go ahead and have you guys tonight, so that we could get it.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Under review anyway, so.
Contact if they come up with questions or any more.
I think it's a good idea to take it under review, but my idea is the top one, what we have now, we're not giving our people a raise. Why do we want to make them pay more insurance, we gotta take care of them, it's pretty simple, get it over with tonight.
Yeah, absolutely, you can make a decision tonight if you want.
You know, it might cost $5,000 if they're not, we're not giving out a pay raise this year, why would we want to go cheaper to give them?
So make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we accept the.
Actually closer.
Yeah, I'll make the motion, we accept the current plan that we have, and with rate increases this year.
Councilwoman, one?
Get it over, I mean.
We're doing with the next one, too, we got till December, but it's like.
Get it knocked out.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah. Councilmember McClanahan.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonham, Councilmember Brown, Councilmember White. And it's already taken care of.
You need to take more time.
Yep. Keep the same, sit in that out-of-pocket. And their savings.
Okay, we will hop back to item A. Betty Phillips' contribution for cemetery paving, there's something going on at the cemetery, council members Bonham or Mayfield, would you like to talk about that?
Do you want this, Patty?
Well, just for the record, Jean and I met with Betty Phillips at the nursing home at Waters with Steve Martindale and Diana Leggett. And Betty agreed that her original money came into the city of $250,000, it was for the water feature, the aquatic water feature. And that's not gonna happen, so she agreed that the next thing she'd like to do for the city would be to pave the cemetery and go as far as that $250,000 would go. And they finished up this week, Jim, Jean?
They're supposed to be back tomorrow to finish, but they got a few odds.
100%, but it's, I don't know, maybe 80% of the roads have been resurfaced, and it looks really, really nice. And there's gonna be a bronze sign at the entrance where the castle gate is, we call it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's gonna be in memory of her husband Dale Phillips and herself, so.
Yeah, they, these two councilmembers worked extremely hard coordinating paperwork to be done, and going out there and talking to Steve and the other Ms. Leggett, I think's her name. So they arranged that, the asphalt's down, it does look wonderful, and it's a large portion of the cemetery, so people are already starting to express their happiness with it, because there are a lot of walkers out there, there's a lot of visitors to our nationally historic cemetery, so it's a nice added feature that is out there. Again, all philanthropical donation from Mr. and Mrs. Phillips, so we appreciate it. Any other comments on that?
Okay, I'm gonna add a comment, because she had given us $50,000 of that money and $175,000 to the heart of Sullivan.
She gave us $75,000.
$75,000.
Yeah, three years.
Yes, and it's in a fund for the aquatic feature. So I just wanted on record in the minutes that she's given me the okay to transfer that to the cemetery paving fund, so that state worth accounts and everybody's happy.
Yeah.
There's paperwork on it, right?
Yeah, we got all the paperwork on that, we redid it twice, in fact, just to make sure that it was clear, $175,000 had been with the heart of Sullivan. And for the water feature, and we had $75,000, so with, we notarized it and everything that Betty agreed to have that money, so that we, make it correct for you to transfer it to the new fund.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you need to vote for that?
We got paperwork, right, and it'll be tapped up in the minutes. I mean, what do you think, do we need a vote?
Yeah, for the record.
Yeah, I thought for the record, our
Yes.
acknowledgement of that move. I'll make that motion that we transfer the money.
Councilwoman Brown makes the motion, is her second. Councilwoman McClanahan, second.
Okay, councilmember Mayfield, councilmember Bonham, councilmember White, councilmember Brown, councilmember McClanahan. All ayes. Set a new fund and move it.
And other new business here, item B, kind of along the same lines, we're all, go ahead and start off by saying the aquatic feature was started, and there was money that came in for it, donated money. But what was started was just the design of one, and by the time we, the last five years happened, inflation has tripled that water feature, and it's become impossible to do. These two philanthropical families, you know, we're getting ready to talk about item B here, had money in it, and so they readjusted, readjust, they adjusted the funds we're going to. Instead of the water feature, they still felt inclined to give to the city of Sullivan somehow, some way. So this next one, item B, James, Jim Connor contributions for pet cemetery. Is there, are you, are you aware of that? You talked to cemetery superintendent and everything, would you like to discuss that?
Well, I'm with, I'm, I'm just, he just briefly talked about it, but they're, they're interested in, they've already platted, not the plots, but the amount of land that are adjacent to the cemetery. They checked, we were, they were a little concerned about the legal aspect of having a pet cemetery close to the regular cemetery, and they, apparently, there's no problem with that. So as far as I know, they're working towards having one out there and getting the fence up and the road extended and all of that. My understanding is that's in the works, and I believe Mr. and Ms. Connor are the ones, you know, they're the ones that are kind of financing this, so.
Yeah, it's, it's on, you know, Jim Connor's talked to our superintendent out there at the cemetery a few times, and then they do have it on the southeast side. Southwest side, yes, all right, southwest side, the cemetery, they have it designed, laid out to where he's coordinated the details of it, too, which, the pricing of it, the configuration of it, how you will, you know, step one step through the process of it, of coordinating with a, what was I saying, crematory? It's gonna be urns, it's gonna be certain, like, it's gonna be one stone urn and all, you know, it's all the same design. He's priced the fencing, he's priced the extension of the road to it, he has all those prices, and it was a $50,000 donation given to go towards that, and it's under that mark, so there'll be some funds left over to maintenance and care for that addition, so.
And I'm waiting on a, Bill's getting me a letter, kind of like this.
From Betty Phillips.
From Betty Phillips for, from Jim Connors.
And we're gonna have a special fund for that money as well.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a special fund.
I think I gave it to her, where I did.
So we need, so we need a motion on that, because I set up a new fund, because he's already.
And it's gonna be a restricted fund, just like the cemetery one, that's not, if there's money left over, it stays in that restricted with those same intentions. And there's one thing about the dog thing, oh, and the dogs have to be ashes, there could be, you know, there's lots to learn about it, you can't bury a dog.
Yeah, he's done a lot of work on the regulations.
Yeah.
And there are several regulations. It seemed like he said it was gonna be uniform, like you were saying.
Of the same stone, same.
Bernard statue.
Same urns, everything placed out there, kind of same, and he has a certain number that it can hold, you know, upfront.
So do they buy the plot, do they buy the area and purchase it, and that goes into this fund?
Yeah. Yeah, from the.
So the purchase of the land where they're gonna put the stone for the animals urn will go back into this fund and never not put into, it'll always be recycled for the.
Well, you still gotta pay the guys to mow, and we didn't stop around there.
Did we say that?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'm just curious of what is, how the plots would be sold, like now, you sell a plot for me, you know, the money goes in this, but I didn't know if.
So, I mean, I.
I was just asking.
That letter has not been written.
Yeah, it's not been drawn up.
Depends on what Jim's wishes are going to be, whether he wants the money to stay in there like a perpetual care, or if he's willing to put it in the regular cemetery, because they're the ones that are going to mow, but that's Jim's
Yes.
deal, just like Betty had her own wishes of how to do the money, not ours.
Not how many, like, how many feet or how many, an acre of land, I was just curious, discussion before we.
I think it's, yeah.
Let's go ahead and vote for a new fund and accept the money. And then you can. Table, table on his wishes.
Yep.
I'll make the motion that get the letter to.
The fund set.
The fund.
The money.
Protect the sign from the don't.
I'll have a second.
I was waiting for Patty, yeah.
Councilmember Banan. Councilmember Bonham, councilmember White.
Hi.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayfield, this is our second, councilmember Patty. Okay.
There's.
Which would be wrong, right?
There was something I wanted to mention that we were talking about, Patty and I, on the 20% that's not paved out there at the cemetery. We were wanting to, to get something like the Wall Bash Valley Foundation. But we were wanting to get something set up similar like the pool at the council agrees, to where we could have a account at the bank, where people could come in and contribute to.
They, you can't just go to the bank and contribute it, it's gotta come through City Hall so you can have a receipt.
Okay, or however.
And there is a cemetery special fund, checking account that I have, back when the former cemetery superintendent, Dick Crooks, done that fundraiser.
Yes, we had an auction.
Yes, so there's still money in that account that's not being used.
Which would be appropriate to use.
Yeah.
Well, we, whatever, we need something easy for the people to do, to get the money donated. But what we were, we had such a reaction on the article that was put on Facebook with people commenting, I don't know how many pages I took out there, it was, I think, six or eight, full of comments that people made favorable to the repaving. So I know there's a lot of interest up there, so the only thing, basically, the tax, our tax money does, as most of you know, is pay the salaries and superintendent, and then take care of the mowing. We have no funds at all available to do anything out there unless it's through contributions. So what we were hoping for was maybe we could set something up and maybe do some advertising, or whatever you want to call it, and see if we could get people interested enough to contribute, like, well, like they did at the pool, it'd be identical to the, to the pool. And see if we could get enough money to where maybe each year, if we have enough accumulated, we could go in and pave a little more, and then get that done. Because we did, we did pave the worst areas, the very worst areas are paved, but there's still, you know, room to, we need some more paving done. But if the council would approve, I would like to get that somehow or other, maybe get that started, and maybe, I don't, who does our advertise, is it Dave?
Social media is managed by, yeah, David, you know, some other advertisement that can be done, but remember, I do remember Dick Crooks did a fundraiser. And the pool has a fundraiser every year, it's the snowball, in January, they host a Woodville Civic Center event, that all those proceeds go to the pool. To where I could talk to Dick, not Dick Crooks, Dick Crooks had a very unique fundraiser, and I don't know the name of it, but it was.
He auctioned off what?
Gravesides, he auctioned off, it was one of a kind.
That was for the entrance, wasn't it?
Nah, it was just to raise funds for the cemetery, yeah, to do things like the entrance and the archway.
I thought it was the archway, the mausoleum.
He had funds.
That's what was more than mausoleum.
Got Tom, he had funds available to do that archway, well, it wasn't the archway, what you're talking about, yes, I think.
It was the drainage, wasn't it?
But it was.
Come in and help.
It was a culvert that.
That's not, I mean, it may have been, but he did, he held a fundraiser, yeah, it was a very, very one-of-a-kind auction, but yes. Yeah, and so we could talk, you know, talk to Bill and see if he wants to do a fundraiser like that every year annually, just like the snowball for the pool over there, and then we can do a campaign, start out with a campaign, and see if there's anything.
I know we lost the money for the fountain to the Wall Bash Valley, we had to return it, I should say lost it, but we had. And I was thinking maybe we could get, however we go through to get that, maybe we could get some funding there, and that type of thing. Pardon me?
They can't pave roads.
Foundation won.
They can't pave roads.
Can't pave roads. The foundation, but there's other, other ones that may be able to.
I think most of it will come through private donations anyway.
It's in a, it's a, it's in a regular photo.
It's about that thing, too. It may. You might check mine, I don't think there was any much on mine. Okay, so yeah, the discussion on that. Okay, moving on, we're gonna go to item B.
I assume we have approval, just approval that we can do it?
It is that.
Just general consensus or whatever?
Go ahead and put a vote, put a vote that you want to consider it, and you're gonna take it under advisement.
I'll make the motion to consider it, take it under advisement.
Is there a second? Councilmember Bonham, will second that.
Scott. Jean. Councilmember McClanahan.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonham. All ayes.
All. Going to item E, she's gotta find some paperwork on item C first, so elective official salary ordinance, it's due by the end of the year. Last month, there was, the salary ordinance passed, now this is for the elected officials, there's no change in it at all, so is there any questions?
The only thing changed is the dates, the year of the ordinance.
And everything, so you need to have a motion by title only.
I'll make the motion, they're reached by title only.
Is there a second? Councilwoman Ayers.
Councilmember McClanahan, councilmember Mayfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown, or Bonham, sorry, hold on, Scott, councilmember Brown. Councilmember White. All ayes. To read by title.
So ordinance number 2025-12, and ordinance fixing the salaries and additional compensation of the mayor, clerk, treasurer, common council, and the city attorney for the city of Sullivan, Sullivan County, Indiana, for the year 2026, in the titles.
I'll make the motion to accept the salary ordinance for the elected officials, point 26.
I'll second.
Second, councilwoman Mayfield, second.
Everything's the same, all right?
Yes, you can compare it with last year's. Councilmember McClanahan.
Aye.
Councilmember Bonham.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Aye.
All ayes, yeah, there was no raises, so there's no changes, I mean, just, it's for 2026, the date, now I put the date on that for December. So, is it adopted tonight?
Yes. I won't step out and help refine this on the next subject, I'll be back.
We won't sign it tonight, I'll run it through again with tonight's date on it, and I'll look you guys up and sign it that way. Because it's got December, because I figured we'd read it tonight, pass it, use it in the future.
We're supposed to suspend the rules to do that, but just take it under, let's vote on it again in December, just because you're supposed to have two readings, unless you suspend the rules, you do it all at once, but we only suspend the rules first. We'll do it again.
So we'll accept the first reading, then?
Accept the first reading, exactly.
That's where I'm at.
Yes.
I knew that's what you wanted to say.
Just help him out there, Tom.
I hit my head the other day, I forgot.
So I don't have to change it, you gotta bring it back next month. There we go.
Forty twenty-seven.
I got forty-two twenty-seven. I got five minutes left of halftime.
I'm always a little slow.
It's okay. Okay, so this is, this is C. Okay, so this is, this is C. We're just, we're just jumping all over the place, JD. It's okay.
So the next item on the new business is the tax anticipation warrant for, uh, drawing the taxes forward for operating expenses and, uh, to, uh, continue services and operating, um, from January on.
Yeah.
Yeah, so is there any questions on the tax anticipation warrant? We, uh, did it for June, June, uh, this year, that carried the, the January's taxes forward. Now we're gonna go to June and carry them to January. Uh, a lot of municipalities, a lot of cities do this, um, to operate and to continue the services. So here's the ordinance.
So, excuse me, are you talking about the taxes collected in June?
Uh huh.
Is what we're going to work with now?
Pulling forward in January, yeah, so, uh.
And did you say like, when, when we do this, we'll be doing this for a couple of years?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause we get it now, and then when we get the taxes, it goes to the bond bank. They take their June payment out, then they wire the rest of the money back to us.
Okay. So you need a motion to read that by title only?
Yeah, I'll hand this to Attorney Falwell.
Do we?
Do we wanna suspend rules?
Yeah, we wanna suspend the rules and do this tonight.
Just suspend the rules.
You gotta have a unanimous vote now.
Tom, news.
Brown too.
Well, it's, it's.
Yeah, we've done it.
We've done, we see different wording, it's where you vote to consider on first reading, passage on first reading.
Hi.
No.
Second, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Councilmember McLennahan.
Yeah.
Motion, and Councilman Brown, second.
Okay, Councilmember Mayfield.
Hi.
Councilmember Bottom.
Over.
Councilmember White.
Hi.
Councilmember McLennahan.
Hi.
Councilmember Brown.
Hi.
All eyes to suspend the rules.
I make the motion to agree by title only.
Scott, read title only.
Is there a second?
Okay, right here, JD. Only, okay, second is Gene. Councilmember McLennahan.
Hi.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Hi.
Councilmember White.
Hi.
Councilmember Brown.
Hi.
Councilmember Bottom, you guys got me coming off the place, all eyes to read by title only.
So, um, title only, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash eleven, it reads by title only, and ordinance authorized the city of Sullivan, Indiana to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of the general fund and park fund of the issuer in anticipation and not nexus of current taxes levied in the year two thousand twenty-five and collectible in the year two thousand twenty-six. Authorizing the issuance of temporary loan tax anticipation warrants to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to the punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon, end of title.
Okay, so it was read by title only, is there now a motion to accept it?
Let me move.
Pass this order. I'll second.
Motion accepted.
Councilmember McLennahan.
Hi.
Councilmember Mayfield.
Hi.
Councilmember White.
Hi.
Councilmember Bottom. Councilmember Brown.
Hi.
All eyes to accept.
Okay, so it's all new business, uh, moving down police, chief guards here. You're up.
Uh, for the month, we had a hundred ninety-two calls to service. Outside of that, uh, we got the new, um, evidence room built here in the garage, the city hall. So we'll be transferring evidence from the old building over here, probably this coming week. You know, get out of that building.
Uh, any, any questions for the police?
Just, I gave a copy of that e-bike going, Mr. Tom, one of the chiefs, and I've got the one from, you know, we got from Carmel, Indiana, but anyway, we'll anticipate we'll talk about that, you know, in spring, at least by March, uh, so we just wanna make it public. Announce that.
Yeah, last month, uh, the discussion of e-bikes came up and if, you know, how, a news story on the, you know, national news came up on the app, the day after we talked, we talked about it here, so, uh, like you said, there's some other cities making some ordinances on it, so, uh, sometime in this early springtime, we'll have something panned out here to present to you and see what you guys think of it, so. Okay. Any questions for the chief? Here none. All right, fire chief, you're up.
Uh, for the month of October, we had, uh, forty-seven fire rescue calls, sixty medic calls, a total of a hundred and seven. For the, for the year, we're up to four hundred and fifty rescue fire calls, six hundred and fourteen. Medic calls, a total of one thousand sixty-four calls for the, for the year. And, uh, also we did the, uh, Halloween trunk or treat, or hot dogs, free hot dog out here during that. Um, then we also did the trunk or treat at the, uh, elementary school. That's about it.
Robbie, how, how much is the township gonna give us for, then they give us an extra ten thousand dollars for?
Yeah, they, they originally gave us twenty-five thousand, they're giving us another ten thousand dollars to spend on some, uh, equipment.
Total of thirty-five thousand.
Some of that has been ordered with, and then we've gotta order some other stuff as well, so. That, that's for equipment only, so.
Are they allowing you to choose the equipment or?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, we're still doing the sixty.
Yeah, we're still getting the concrete.
Any other questions for the fire chief?
Is this an extra thirty-five that we're getting?
No, extra ten.
Extra ten.
Yeah.
Extra ten. That could be, it could change year to year, yeah. Here and then for the fire chief, streets, utilities, public works department.
Hey, for the month of October, for the street department part, they picked up thirty loads of brush, load sea owned and charging lots, load parking pool, shut, shut water off, wind rise, park bathrooms, came in early, cleaned the square for Halloween parade, placed flag for sectional. Uh, they did set up the civic center, uh, trim brush from East Lagoon Lane, operated streets sweepper, marsh leaves at the city park, cut tree that fell at the city park in Davidson Lot. And mowed the parts, uh, mowed the street department. And then for sewer in October, camera two hundred feet of sewer line on North Broad, worked on storm line on West Beach and West Street. Uh, we placed storm drain box and storm line at Cinder Ridge Cemetery, section five, jetted seven hundred eighty feet of sewer line, twenty-six locate requests, and checked lift station fourteen times.
I'd like to compliment them and also appreciate, my appreciation, our appreciation, because the, in order to, uh, get that paving done, we had to put that sewer in, because if we had, we'd been taking the paving.
Storm drain.
The storm drain, I'm sorry, storm drain, so they did a super job, they were down there.
Yeah, that was a little curve ball to where one day they milled and said, well, this is falling in, to where, you know, Way Myers, one heck of a worker, been around thirty plus years, and he jumped right on it, he had a box sitting down there, structure box, and in two days he had it.
He didn't hold the paving up a minute, I mean, they, he had it all done, and it was just amazing how, in fact, you guys worked on that under pressure, I know, cause we had a deadline for the paving coming in, so he, he did a super job. Everybody concerned down there thanking for us, appreciate it.
Okay, any questions for Robert about the public works? Okay, uh, citizens present to address the board. Let's see, anyone out there to address the board and council comments?
Uh, one, Nancy Fertile Allen has contacted me a couple times within the last month. Robbie went down, Robbie sent out some, sent a letter to the owner of the trailer parks. Her concern is too, is the amount of campers that are in the trailer park and the rule, what is the ordinance on campers into the trailer park and the possibility of it being sold to another entity that, this is all hearsay, but the individual said he's gonna put more. Did tell Nancy I wouldn't bring it up, she's under the weather, cannot come down. Is it?
You read the ordinance, or has somebody read the ordinance?
I, I have not read the ordinance, I've talked with Robbie, Robbie sent out some letters, sent a letter to him, there, the doors are caved in on the trailer too, I mean, you wanna talk, the, the blighted property down there, nothing changed from last year.
And I've got the same thing in my district three, people complaining about the tornado zone campers that they're living in. So we choked on the war hookups.
I think, I think the ordinance addresses some of that, it prohibits living in a camper.
But I think some of them had been issued letters, right?
One of the, uh, real area has been issued, and I think we're supposed to talk to Doug and see what we are gonna do for the next, wh- what we need to do next on that.
I think got clotheslines, a patio furniture, carport camp.
Cause it's been past, it's been past the thirty days.
They've set up shop and they, they concern why he, he's gonna go talk to Attorney Falwell, it's cause.
And the neighbors are, you know, not ask, keep asking me.
We need to do it, we can correct it, yeah, take him to the. Yeah, it's, it's.
And there's the same home, try to, try the park, please.
Yes.
Well, Brian Johnson, Rob and all that.
Yeah, so I, I remember mobile home parks have their own code.
Correct.
And so, I mean, that's where, we gotta make sure ours jives with that to where we can do that, so that's where I'd like to check first.
I think we've, I think we've asked, I think we asked Doug last year about it, I think we were supposed to look into it and see what, what we're allowed to do for campers in the trailer park, where if they're allowed to be in there or not.
I think, no, they're not, that, you know, campsites are one thing, but mobile home, mobile homes and a mobile home park is an entirely different thing altogether. They're not trailers, they're mobile homes. Trailers like full line of car, right, so campers are not set up like a mobile home is.
Not secure.
Yeah, all kinds of, they're not have tie downs and all kinds of things.
Even the, the mobile homes down there are not secure. Shouldn't the mobile home parks do what the city dictates, it's rather the other way around?
Yeah.
That's what I've brought up before, and it's they, they kinda trumped us on their mobile home.
That's fair housing, that's kinda get involved in, and it can be unfair housing, in my opinion, some of it's real arbitrary, I guess, uh, there could be some fair housing involved.
And so on that, like, we'll definitely research it and make sure we're either not.
Yeah, I'll talk to.
Question there was.
And I think Nancy did it about a year ago too as well, and she's been real patient.
And they, they.
They did clean it up.
They let it go.
They did clean it up.
Go.
You know, well, last time she was here, they did clean it up since then, but now, now they've got the two or three.
Like there, what's that street?
Troll and Bell.
Bell, you know, where the doors knocked in, and then you got the, it's just, they drove through there and it's not.
Yeah, Charles the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it, they're not, it's just important as anybody else is.
They cleaned up.
There's a new home down there.
But they didn't take down the trailers, the trailer frame was sitting there, there's underskirting on one trailer.
Robbie did send, Robbie had, Robbie did do that first. And that, and then I contacted, uh, about Davis District one, we got it on a work order to brush acts that street too on Troll Street.
No boxes were being hidden and.
Well, the brush there on Troll Street, they're on the.
Yeah, that's the no box site, so where it's growing out. Yeah.
It's on work.
The county assessors in years past with the brush act.
Well, uh.
They've, they've. In years past, every year come in for a week or even two, if we have the list, we'll have a list provided to them, they go to the waste park, treat the land, they go to the other areas that have similar growing with this wood line on the side of a street. They'll knock it down, there's alley, alleyways that will send them down, and they, yeah, they've helped.
Now I did go on and call Bob, say, you can get this one.
Yeah, yeah, I drove down by there, it can't hurt, past your car.
There's another street over here, uh, Dorf.
Yeah. Uh, so your second question was, is there somebody pursuing to purchase these two trailers?
Yeah, I, well, just for what I asked Robbie today about, he sent a certified letter and nobody signed yet, I thought, okay, if it changed hands.
Certified letter?
That's why I used it, you. Why you use it, sent them certified?
Uh, you sent, yeah, we had, okay, yeah.
He did.
Okay, I thought you said we received a certified letter from.
He sent it, but my question is, if it changed hands, Doug, that if the letter was sent to the previous owner, he didn't have to sign for it, right?
Correct.
So, so to find out, we need to go to the assessor's office and find out.
If he doesn't sign for it, it's gonna come back to us.
It hasn't come back yet. But he hadn't signed for it either though, right?
I haven't got their card.
Then, there hasn't been a new owner yet.
Okay.
I'm still communicating with him, he wants me to fill out a few documents, sign a document or an initial off.
There again, another resident in that area told me that, I just, I passed it on to Robbie today, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
You know, we're.
We spoke to the guy pursuing to acquire these.
Out of your picture office, yes.
Yeah, impressive, very nice, yeah. And for those.
It's, uh, coming out of Indianapolis, that is, uh, far along in the deal.
It would be a nice mobile home park, they've got some nice mobile homes in there.
Keep it mowed and keep it.
Used to be cleaned out, now.
Neighbor to the north, they still have trash coming over there.
Yeah.
Surprised one of the other neighbors who's here.
Any other council comments?
Nathan Campbell did a good job when he, he started it.
Halloween, I'll, I'll just have three things draw it down here, Halloween was off, the, uh, the expectations, it blew the expectations out of the water. You know, it was a really nice event, brought a lot of people downtown, you know, it was just, uh, uh, they got a judge down there that judged costume contest, and it, it really was a nice event to have, weather did cooperate, and, uh, it was, you know, good again next year. Um, holiday season is coming up, you know, we'd be thinking that, last two days, we experienced some of the weather, but holiday season's coming up, um, you know, just know holiday season's upon us, really, got the guys out there putting up a couple garland lights today, I seen, so, uh, leaf schedule should be coming out, it's gonna be basically the month of December, it would be a leaf pickup, we'll, we'll have something go out on social media, but, uh, the leaves have fallen, a lot of them have fallen in the last couple of days, and so they're on the ground, and we'll, Robert and Chris and all those guys are, uh, preparing to pick that up, so we'll get around to doing that, so. That's all the comments I have, anybody else? Uh, is there a motion to adjourn this?
I'll make a motion.
He's good.
Robert. How's your new house?
Oh, awesome.
All right. That's great.
Use the mouse.
Yes, well, by December fifteen, you've got a little bit of time.